The Planning Board, ZBA, sorry. Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Roll call please.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, please.
Mr. Galati?
Here.
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 Here. So we have a number of items on the agenda tonight. They're all public hearings. The first one is Appeal Number 187675. It's for Joan D. Sanford, seeking an area variance with Section 240-30-B of the district regulations in R-40 zoning where no more than two accessory structures shall be permitted in a one-family resident district. The applicant has three existing structure and is proposing the construction of a new 10-by-16 shed, thus requesting a variance to allow all four structures to remain. The property is located at 131 Ketchum Town Road and is identified by tax grid number 615703294263 in the town of Waptonshire. Joan, why don't you come up and tell the audience what you're looking for?
I have a mention. I have received a microphy. I'm a quartet.
Wait, Joan, you have to stay over here by the microphone. We're being taken.
Before we do that, can I have a motion to open a public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Sorry, please proceed.
Okay. I feel we're not talking to those people, but I'll talk to you.
Okay.
As you know, when you came to the house on Saturday, I have five and a half acres. I have a small shed, a garage, and another shed in the back. I have one neighbor who is physically next to my house. The rest of my neighbors are, basically, they probably wouldn't even see any of the sheds, probably the garage. So what I'd like to do is, I do not have a attic in my home. I want to consolidate and clean it out and start organizing. I'd like to take items out of my basement, which, of course, my house is an 1860, so my basement has dirt floor. And I'd like to take like my gardening stuff out of there and just have everything in one spot that is dry. I like to put my bicycle in there, too. I did everything that you had asked me to do. I have paperwork for you. You'd like me to bring it up?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. It's from Southern Angeles News, page receipt, and after David.
Excuse me?
The green cards.
Green cards are all here. These ones you want or the other ones? Which ones do you want? These are the ones that were sent back.
The green one you see showing people, you know, I need to actually deliver it to everybody.
I did, so here.
I have the white receipt, so.
You want the small one, then, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because not everybody sent them back. I did give you a list here of who did send them back. I was hoping today to get a couple of more.
This is something you should have gone right to the public hearing. So I don't know what.
So I also, after the, after you met with me, I did see Simon on his property, and I asked him if he would write you a letter and give his opinion of what he felt about having a fourth outbuilding. I have the letter here. May I give it to you so you can read it?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I said he gave directly next to me.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Joan? So I have a statement. So right now you have three existing. You're going to put a fourth in there. We talked about this when we were at your house, about taking the smaller one down, the little five-by-six. Again, we like to keep it to three structures if we can. I don't want to set a precedent that basically says that you have four, everybody else is going to want four. So I wonder if you would consider taking down the smaller shed.
Like I explained to you, when I bought that house 40 years ago, May 28th, I had horses. And that little shed looks like a barn, and I'm keeping the country look to it. I'm not willing to get rid of that shed. I like how it looks. It's yellow. It's the same color as my house. The new shed is going to be painted yellow. I'm going to put a courtyard between the new shed and the old shed, and actually, from the road, you're probably not going to even see the new one.
So you do realize that you're asking for the fourth structure here, and we don't have to necessarily grant that if we're going to keep the other three structures?
I understand that.
Okay?
But I'm hoping that you do, because you can see how neat my property is, totally landscaped. It's always neat. It's always clean. My neighbor didn't have to write a beautiful letter like that.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
So the new shed you are putting, what shape will it be, that? Like barn shed?
I'm sorry?
The new shed you're planning to put in, what shape will it be, that? Similar to what you have five-by-eight?
The new shed is 10-by-16.
Yeah. What shape will it be?
Oh, the little shed? Oh, it's like five-by-six. You saw it.
Right.
It's a small, and it looks like a little barn. It's just like really cute.
So newer will be also like barn, or no?
No, you have a copy of it. It's just a straight shed, the next one. The new one is just a straight shed. It's got double doors on the front. The two windows have window boxes. It actually was the one that I had gone over to New Paul's at the fair, the New Paul's fair, and it is the one that Brad Barnes used, you know, to solicit their barns. And when I went over there, he said that I could have it for a little bit less than what he had at the, at the fair. And as I said, it's paid for. So if you guys say no to me, then I just, I hope I get my money back. I didn't realize that it was going to be this difficult to get a shed, honestly. I've done everything by the books through the town for 40 years. I've kept my house beautiful for 40 years, and I've kept my lawns beautiful. It's all landscaped. It's very nice. You saw it. It's in really nice condition.
So we're not, we're not saying anything about your property. It's very nice, very well-maintained. This has to do with a variance that you're coming before the board to get, and you're asking our permission to grant that variance?
Correct, yes.
So.
Are there any other structures that you'd be willing to remove?
I'm sorry?
Are there any other structures on the property you'd be willing to remove?
There is, I, to have some storage out of my house, I rented one of those sheds from, who is that off in the kip say?
Arnoff.
Thank you. Arnoff. That shed is going. That would go.
That's the box.
That was the box.
Right. That's a different issue.
But that has to go anyway.
No, I could keep it there forever if I wanted. I would just have to get a permit for it.
We don't give permits to cargo containers or pods.
Okay. So it would have to go. It would go anyway, yes.
You have, what, a nine-month restriction?
If you had taken it out when you first got it, which you yourself said has been there a while, we allow nine months for people in transition that are getting ready to move.
Yes, yes.
So technically, as part of, if a variance were granted, that would be one of the things that would have to be removed?
I would absolutely do that.
As part of the condition?
Yes, that would go. I believe I said that to you on Saturday. I think you had asked me that on Saturday, and I said, no, that it would be going.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Do you have all the paperwork's in order, I assume? Okay, thank you. Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Is anybody else, is anybody in the audience here to speak?
Ah, sorry. Anybody else like to speak for or against this variance? Okay. Hearing none. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Can I have a motion to either grant or deny the variance?
I'll make a motion if you want. Want to go ahead, Bob?
I make a motion to, uh, grant the variance with the conditions that the, one of the three existing accessory structures is removed. So limiting the accessory structures to three total.
You're on four.
So what you want to do is, in order to grant the variance, you want one of them to come down in addition to the pod also being removed?
Right, correct.
Okay. That's the motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I second it.
Roll call be?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Galati?
I second with distiruation.
And I'm going to also concur with Mr. Haas that what he said, that has to be the only three sheds, and the pod has to come down.
Go away.
Go away.
Mr. Haas?
I agree with Mike.
And I'm going to agree as well, again, same condition, only three structures there, and the pod has to go immediately. So it's been there for quite some time, and it's extended past the nine-month period, so again, that has to be removed as well. So small shed has to go, and the pod has to go. And that's what the, we, in that particular case, we grant the variance, in that respect. So your variance is granted, except for you have to remove, again, the small yellow structure or another structure, and the pod also has to go. Okay?
It's your rule. I guess it has to be okay.
That's what we rule. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda tonight is Appeal Number 197674, Claudia Levesque and Joe Schaefer, seeking area variance in Section 240-37 of District Regulations in an R-40 zone where no accessory structure is permitted in the front yard. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow for an 18-foot above-ground pool, round pool, and deck to be placed in their front yard. The prop is located at 188 Osborne Hill Road and is identified by tax grid number 615601 418560 in the town of Waptonshire. Good evening, Claudia and Joseph. So why don't you tell the audience a little bit about what you want, but before we do that, we need to open the public hearing. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sorry, now you may speak.
Okay. So we live on a flag lot, right off of Osborne Hill Road. Our property doesn't touch Osborne Hill, which I think you've all, you've all seen the properties. So the way our house is situated on the property, it's in the back, so everything we have is front yard. That's all we have. And the unique thing about our property is, you really can't see any of our neighbors. We're surrounded by trees, woods. We share a driveway.
Driveway.
We have a driveway with Mr. Patina, and the house is facing that drive. But anyway, the reason for the variance is, the only place we have to put the pool is in, is in the front. Everything's in the front, but that's the only really option we have.
Yeah, so we took a look at your property. We looked at moving it potentially farther back. There was no option there. Looks like where you have it now is probably in the best location.
Yeah.
Give a little bit of sunlight, you know, full sunlight for the day, and we just got that one big tree in the overhang there, but other than that...
And it is the furthest away, there, it's the furthest away from all the properties.
All the other properties, correct. Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
I have no questions.
Anybody from the audience like to speak for or against this variance? Okay. Hearing none. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I now have a motion to either grant or deny the variance?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to grant the applicant the variance. Your property is quite unique, you know, like to that. I don't believe the benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means. There is no undesirable change to the neighborhood or surrounding area. The request is substantial, however, there will be no adverse effects on the environment as well, so I vote that we grant the applicant the variance.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please be.
Either one.
What is that going to do?
Yes.
We both did it at the same time.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So the variance is granted. You're all set to go. It'll be available in about five days, and you're all set to go.
Thank you.
Just note for the record that this lot does not have frontage on Town Road, and that no pursuant to Town Law 280A, the permit, building permit can be granted, notwithstanding the fact that it doesn't have any frontage.
Okay.
Did you just say that, Jim, or is it good enough you said? Just, we'll put it in the record.
I think, I think you just did. Thank you.
You're good to go.
Okay, you're good to go.
Thanks.
Okay. Next item on the agenda tonight is Appeal Number 197676, Nicole and Travis Clark, seeking an area variance of Section 240-37 of District Regulations in an R-40 zoning district where 35 feet is required to the front lot. The applicant only provide 30 feet, thus requesting a variance of 5 feet for the construction they need by five front porch. Prop is located at 47 Robert Lane and is identified by tax grid number 6180, 6158049201 143 in the town of Waptonshire. May I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Nicole, I guess.
So we are just looking to replace our front porch. Currently, we, it's actually what's existing on the property, so we just replace it what's already there using truck construction.
There's a walkway, I don't know if you guys were out there?
Yeah, we were out there. We took a look.
Yeah, you see the walkway going to it. I mean, if she was to have to turn it, it would basically mean, you know, you're going to end up having to dig up that hole.
So basically, what you're going to do is this almost the same footprint, but you're going to make it a little bit wider. Is that what you're going to do? Okay.
Are you the, I'm sorry, you're the person?
This is my mother.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
You're going to be doing the construction, probably.
No, no, actually, no.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No.
I have no questions.
Anybody from the audience like to speak for or against this variance? If not, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion to either grant or deny the variance?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance. The requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood. There will be no substantial detriment created to nearby properties. There are no other feasible means available for you to pursue the benefit that you seek. The requested variance is not substantial, because you're actually putting the footprint in the same spot. And the proposed variance will not have a adverse effect or on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and the alleged difficulty is self-created but not detrimental. So I make a motion that we grant.
And I think what it does aesthetics-wise, it makes it look a lot nicer, too, so I think that the neighborhood and yourselves will all like that. So can we have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call be, please?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Galati?
Yes.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Motion's been granted. You're all set. Paperwork will be out in five days, and you're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Okay. Next item up is number, Appeal Number 197677, Kevin and Lynn Asti. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Seeking area variance of Section 240-37 of the District Regulations in an R-20, R-40 zoning district where 10 feet on the side yard is required. The applicant only provide 4 feet, thus requesting a variance of 6 for the legalization of that nice, wonderful, red shed you have in the back. Prop is located at 7 Heather Court and is identified by tax grid number 625602605769 in the town of Waptonshire. Be, roll the mailings in order.
They are.
Okay. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Kevin, go ahead.
Hi. Thank you for your time tonight. We're here for the variance. We have an existing shed that was placed on our property in the early 2000s, many, many years before we bought the property in 2016. So we're seeking a variance of six feet. It's currently four feet off the property line, and it's an eight-by-eight foot shed, generally used for tools and things like that.
How long have you owned the property?
Since 2016.
Okay. Now you're in the process of selling it, and in the process of selling, you found out, huh, going to legalize the shed? Is that what happened?
Correct.
Okay.
So Barbara, I guess this is a makeshift amnesty, huh?
Amnesty was only offered for a year in 2003.
Yeah. I missed out on that. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any, anybody like to speak for or against this in the audience? Seeing and hearing none. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to either grant or deny the variance?
I'll make a motion to grant the applicant the variance. I don't believe that the benefit could be achieved by any other feasible means. It's, actually, it's quite, shed is quite nice. Doesn't create any undesirable detriment to the neighborhood. The request is substantial, however. No adverse effects on the environment, and the, whether it's self-created, I guess, is questionable, because you didn't put it there, but it is part of your property, but as Tom had mentioned before, there is no detriment. So I vote yes to grant the applicant the variance.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call be, be, please?
Yes.
Mr. Galati?
Yes.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Yes. So you have been approved. You're all set. You're going to be legal now. You can sell that property. And good luck to you.
Hard to believe it's still in Waptonshire, by the way.
It is. Just barely. Bring lots of fuel. Thank you.
It's true.
Have a good night.
Did we mention that?
Okay. Next on the agenda, Appeal Number 197679, Donald F. Ross, seeking area variance Section 240-37 of District Regulations in the R-20 zoning district where 20 feet to the side yard is required. The applicant only provide 14.7 feet, thus requesting a variance of 5.3 for two existing decks. Where 20 feet to the side yard line is required, the applicant only provide 17 feet, thus requesting a variance of 3 feet. Property is located at 50 Topo Hill Road and is identified tax grid number 635903004014 in the town of Waptonshire. And I just want to make an opening statement. He is my neighbor, but that will have no adverse effect on my decision.
We've got a couple of neighbors in here tonight, I think.
So can I have a motion to open, open the public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Can I have a second?
All seats.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
Thank you. My name's Don Ross. I live at 50 Topo Hill Road. Thank you for your time. I appreciate that. I don't know what stuff coming out on a Saturday. So I have an existing deck that's 14.7 feet from the property line, so I'm going to be asking for a 5.3-foot variance for the existing deck. And the new deck that we want to build is roughly 17 feet, or not roughly, it is 17 feet for the property line. So we're looking for a 3-foot variance for the new deck, which is going to be a 10-by-24 deck, pool deck. I might say that my wife won't be happy till you can land a helicopter on my deck. So those are the, those are the two variances I'm requesting. Do you have any questions?
I think we were all out there on, you were out there tonight, but I think that the other four of us were out there and we saw the outline. Is there a question?
Right.
Something you want to add?
What's that?
Is there something you want to add?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. So again, we were all out there. We got a view, but you had it staked out very nice, or chalked out very nice, so we all saw where your boundary was. As a matter of fact, your property actually is on the other side of the fence that we saw, so that was, that was good news, too. So any questions from anybody in the board?
Pretty straightforward.
Anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this variance? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion to either grant or deny the two variances? And just keep them together, so we'll pass it or decline as one variance.
I think a motion to grant the variance. The benefit...
Variances, right?
Huh? Variances, two. One existing and one new. The benefit is not achievable by any other means. It's not an undesirable change in the neighborhood. The request is a little bit substantial. It won't have any physical and environmental effects on the rest of the neighborhood, and it is self-created. But I still recommend that we approve it.
Okay. Can I have a second, please?
I do second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Galati?
Yes.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Yes. So you're approved. Five days, you'll get your paperwork. You're all set to go. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Even though you're a Red Sox fan, we're still going to approve you.
I knew that.
Next appeal number, 197678, Red Cedar Arborist and Landscapes Incorporated, seeking area
Yes.
Mr. Gallardi?
Yes.
Mr. Delacour?
Yes.
Yes.
So you're approved, five days, you'll get your paperwork, you're all set to go. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Even though you're a Red Sox fan, we're still going to approve you.
I knew that.
Okay. Next appeal number, 197678, Red Cedar Arborist and Landscapes Incorporated, seeking area variance section 240-37 and 240-3B of District Regulations in HB zoning district where 75 feet is required to a state or county road. The applicant can only provide 42 feet, thus requesting a variance of 33 feet for an existing barn and new arbor. Also, where no accessory building height can exceed 20 feet, the applicant can only provide 25 feet, thus requesting a variance of five feet to legalize the existing height on the non-conforming barn. And then, of course, the third one is where 20 feet to the side yard property line is required, the applicant only provide eight feet, thus requesting a variance of 12 feet to allow building on the right side of the property. Prop is located at 185 New Hackensack Road and is identified by tax grid number 615802999951 in the town of Wapenture. P, are all the paperwork in order? Can I have a motion to open a public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Why don't you introduce yourself? I know Mr. Ruyay from Red Cedar. Introduce yourself, man.
I'm Michelle Zurfus from Joe Berger's office, Berger Engineering.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Can you just speak up a little bit?
I'm Michelle Zurfus from Berger Engineering, Joe Berger's office. And most of the requested variances are for existing around the sides of the building. There is the new one to add on to the front of the building.
The wooden structure he was talking about on side of the...
Right. It's just a cover for the door and an arbor to dress up the building, which the planning board liked, and they gave us the architectural approval last week. So we've had architectural review approval. So that is the one new that's not existing variance that they would like. And it brings it out nine feet further from the building. Building was already in a setback. This is additional nine feet.
So basically, by online, you're going to redo the whole building, right? Because I don't know if the folks know, this is next to the doctor's office there. They've got that big, I'll call it silver building there, and what they're going to do is really rejuvenate the whole thing. It's, they're going to make it really, really nice. I don't know if you can see the sketches. Steve, if you might just show the audience a little bit. We've seen it. So I don't know if the folks can see what it would look like before, but what it looks like now is a significant improvement. And most of the variances you're requesting are basically to get you in compliance, and the only one that you're actually doing new is the wood structure on the front. Okay. Any questions from the board at all?
You have a question?
There's something about a neck deck that was issued, and this one?
The planning board issued a neck deck at their May 6 meeting, so that you can...
So we can make a ruling on the variance?
Yes.
I have a question, and I'm confused about the height variance. I was looking at the code, and it's 35 feet?
For the primary structure.
Oh, this is accessory structure.
Right.
So it's 20 feet. Is that to the peak, or is that to the median?
To the median of the roof.
Okay, so he still needs...
Still needs five feet.
Okay.
Right.
And the, just while we're talking about it, the other building's existing, but it is eight feet from the side, from the right side.
Right, right, right.
So this is just basically cleaning up some deficiencies.
And the other thing he said he was going to do in the back is he's going to put a berm in the back for the noise, and put some trees up on the back, so that'll help, because they have the, just to make it a little more aesthetically looking nice, but also to, you know, help out the tenants that are, I guess, off to the right with the doctor's office.
You know, a good landscaper, and I can take care of that.
There'll be some, there's, there's going to be a berm kind of going across, and then on the side, it's going to have a berm fence and the berm with trees sort of across to cut, cut off the back part.
That's in between this property and the, and the doctor's place.
Correct.
How high is the berm? Just out of curiosity.
I thought, I thought your gentleman said four feet?
It's, it's probably...
It's not?
This, the berm here is about three feet.
Okay.
Here at somewhere. So it's going to have the fence running along.
But you're also going to plant the trees on the berm, though, too, right?
A berm is three feet. Fence along here. And this is a bower, just, we'll have plants in it, not necessarily, trees, but, yeah, a lot of plants. And then these trees, just for decoration, so a tree, part of it is, it's in the airplane, it's in the airport zone, so it came in a really tall tree, so that's...
Although the trees behind you are significantly larger than the ones at the property now, so...
Existing one.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No. No, we took a look at the site on Saturday, and you've got a rundown on how everything looked, and...
Is there anybody in the audience like to speak for or against the variance? Hearing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I now have a motion to either grant or deny the variance, please?
Can we do these all in one shot?
Yeah, we'll do them all in one shot.
All right. I'll make a motion to grant the applicant the variance. I think you're going to improve the property substantially and all the buildings that are there. Anything that you're, you're going to do is going to improve the way that looks. I don't believe the benefit can be achieved by any other means. It's not going to create any undesirable change to the neighborhood or properties. Some of the requests are substantial in nature. Will create no adverse effects to the neighborhood, and I don't believe that these are self-created. So I grant the variances to the applicant.
Or you want to make a motion to grant them?
I'll make a motion to grant. Second. The variances.
Okay. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Gallardi?
Yes.
Mr. Delacour?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Yes. So your variances have been approved, five days paperwork will come out, and you're good to go. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Okay, the last but not least, appeal number 197680, E and C, I'm going to say this wrong, Espositos Properties, seeking area variance of section 240-37 and 240-3B of District Regulations in R20 zoning, where 35 feet to the front property line is required. The applicant only provide 15 feet, thus requesting a variance of 20 feet for the expansion of an existing building. Where no more than two accessory buildings shall be permitted in a one-family residential district. No such accessory building shall have a footprint greater than 600 square feet or a height in excess of 20. The applicant is proposing a 30-by-60 foot four-bey garage, 1,800 square feet, thus requesting a variance of 1,200 square feet. The property is located at 20 McFarland Road and is identified by tax grid number 61570407, sorry, 0720271 in the town of Wapenture. Can I have a motion to open a public hearing, please?
I'll make a motion that we open.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Why don't you give your name to the audience? I'm sure there's some questions going to be here.
Margaret McManus with Badian Watson. As you know, we're here requesting two variances. One is for an existing non-conforming condition, which is...
Margaret, pull the mic towards you.
Oh, sorry. So the first is for an existing non-conforming setback from the front yard, which is about 15 feet presently and will continue to be. We need to get the variance if there is going to be any change or improvement to the building, which we are seeking under site plan review. The, the other variance is to construct a garage that is 1,800 square feet, which is more than the allowable for accessory buildings in this zone. As you know, the site is used as a commercial, it received a use variance. Their requirements are to meet the underlying zoning, and that's why we are seeking the variance for the garage.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions?
No, I just wanted to say that we did visit the site last Saturday. Al met us out there.
Correct.
And we, we just had a little question about the side front of the building that's not going to be a pass-through for a vehicle, is it?
So what happened was that shale was blasted out, it looks like, on the side, I think is what he's talking about.
Yes.
Yes.
That was cleaned out, and looks like, you know, it looks nice, but it's not going to be a drive-through, right?
It doesn't necessarily have to be a drive-through lane. You know, we were going to, right now, it's just gravel, it could stay gravel, we could put grass there, we could pave it, you know, that, that hasn't been decided. I mean, obviously, it hasn't been decided on the planning board level. That would not require a variance, I don't believe.
Okay. Just wanted, concerned about why it was cleaned out.
So how many vehicles is he going to have there? It's going to be seven vehicles, is that what you're talking about? That he's now going to, because I think he's got one or two there now, and he's going to end up with seven in total? Because he's trying to basically take, he's got another building, and he wants to consolidate, I think is what the purpose of doing this is.
Right. So he has equipment that, obviously, this time of the year could be stored outside, but in inclement weather cannot be stored outside because there's actual fluids and water inside of the units, and they need to be in a conditioned environment, so they need to be in a heated environment so they don't freeze. Those, those vans are presently stored at a different location in...
And how many is he going to store, how many are they going to store inside now? Of the seven that are going to come? All of them?
All of the ones that have interior...
Systems.
Systems.
And what about the trailers in the back? There's some silver trailers or something in the back, what is he doing with those? Off to the side? So if you go on the property off the left-hand side, there's like three or four trailers?
Are they not in the parking area?
Yes, they're, they're in the back of the lot.
Like here? In the parking area?
Yeah.
That's where they are.
So we're just, we're just wondering, what is he doing with those? Is that more storage? I mean, what is that? Because that's really not, doesn't look like it's part of his business. It's not a van or anything else. It looks like it's just...
Well, I wasn't there. Were they, are they trailers, like contractor trailers?
Yeah, they're like enclosed box trailers, right?
No, they look like camping trailers that pop up. They look like pop-ups.
Oh, is that right?
So my, I was wondering if he was renting parking spaces for them.
I don't believe he is. He has, I know that the boat trailer is his personal boat trailer, so I mean, unfortunately, Mr. Espinoza is not here tonight.
Make that a condition. He can rent out space or whatever, or he can have...
I don't think we addressed that ever.
What's that?
I don't think we ever addressed that, whether he could rent out. It wasn't in the use permit, but it wasn't, it wasn't approved or denied in the use permit. We never mentioned it.
But you can make it a condition if we want.
Well, but, but Mr. Espinoza wasn't the owner of the property when the use variance was granted. That was granted to the previous owner.
It's true, but...
But it was restrictive in what we allowed him for the use variance.
Yeah, there are only a couple.
Nothing, nothing was allowed outside. That was one of the conditions.
Outside storage of material.
No, outside of, of anything. We said it had to be...
Well, he can park vehicles there, right?
Vehicles are...
Personal vehicles?
Vehicles are fine.
Okay.
Equipment is fine, but these are not equipment.
Well, maybe they're part of his cleaning business. We don't know what they are. And the concern was that he was renting parking places. That was my concern when I saw those trailers.
I do not believe he is renting parking spaces.
Okay, okay. Then it's either personal property or it's...
So what we can do, Bob, is this is part of the condition for either granting or denying, assuming, you know, you're going to grant it. We can always say that you can't rent those out, and we'll just put that stipulation in.
You can't do that in a, can you do that in an area variance? I don't think so. It would have to be an extension of...
So you're radically doing it. I mean, the other, it's also subject to site plan approval, so that could also be a condition of the site.
So we, we can put a condition in, or we can have the planning board do it, but we might as well do it.
I think it's an oversight. That was a very, I wouldn't say confusing, but it was a hard thing to, to define the use permit, because you don't know what it was going to be used for, but...
Correct.
So...
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a concern when I saw a lot, a lot of parking place means a blacktop. I don't know how the rainwater will be contained.
Right, so the existing condition in it has, has existing blacktops.
Right.
Some of the blacktop is going to be removed. This has already been removed. Anything that's approaching on the neighborhood's property, so we're actually going to have a net reduction in the pervious surface, and also you can tell that this is not in very good condition, it's broken up. So it's going to be repainted, and that will, I mean, it will, it basically should close, and it will continue to...
So when we repaint, it will not increase the area like that space between the front neighbor and the building? The one which is, I think we talked about knocking, to clear up that area?
There, there's green space here between the...
Yeah, that's it, okay, then...
Yeah, there's green space, that will become green, or...
Green, okay.
Because right now, it's pretty much a large pile.
Now, do you have wetlands in the back of that property, too?
There are wetlands in the back, just probably part of the site plan will be mitigating the encroachment that happened.
Okay. Because we also noticed, in addition to the side, looked like there was shale there, he blasted it out on the one side, but it looks like he did it also in the back of the property, too. And, and I think you, Al, you were saying that the wetlands are a little bit farther in the back, so they still had some space, but I don't know if that would affect it.
So this, this is, you're talking about like this burning area that he put along there? That, that is subject to site plan review.
Okay.
What, you know, what kind of mitigation will happen? Because there will be mitigation because of the encroachment of the wetland. So right now, we're looking to see if this garage can be part of that site plan.
Okay.
He overspent his bounds a little bit in terms of, he was a little too aggressive, I think, when he was doing some earth moving over there, okay?
Got it.
Yes.
Okay.
Hence, bringing in the experts to help him get himself out of those jams.
Got it.
Got it, but the impervious has not been increased, it's actually been a decrease.
Decrease, correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for board members? Otherwise, we're going to open it up to the audience. Anybody from the audience like to speak for or against this particular proposal or approval? Yes, sir, come on up and please state your name and your address.
Good evening. Name is Doug Bowlen, 23 McFarland Road, Wapenture, Wapenture. I'm here to probably get a little bit clearer position, okay, on what we're talking about. I see a site plan over here, I don't see much about the building changes. They're coming 20 feet closer to the road?
No, they're not, they're going to stay exactly the same.
Well, you're requesting a variance, okay?
So, yes, so the, the existing setback is 15 feet, and the requirement is 35. So in order for this building, in order for us to improve this building, which is what we want, is to enclose this concrete and make that part of the building square enough, and increase and make the outside look better?
Let's just...
This is the requirement, and this is the driveway.
Okay, we're not coming this way?
No.
Oh, no, no. This, this will stay the same, but they want to improve the outside of it, so it'll look better.
So you're not talking, you're not talking in a form where you're talking...
This, this is the existing...
This is the partial property, then the subdivision?
No, this is all part of the...
Okay, this is another piece of property.
Over here is the other part. So he has a flag lot, so his driver comes along here, and then this, this, the easement is for the existing condition, for the variance. The variance is because of the existing...
My mic is going.
Sorry, you just have, just have to get near the mic.
Yeah, get him close to the mic.
Yeah, I think...
It is not increasing.
So...
The other, the other question I have is, I'd like to ask what's going to be going on, on the property?
Can I just ask you one question before we answer that one? You, you said you're across the street, just for 23 is across?
I am.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm concerned, okay, with the valuation affecting my property.
Yep. So, so what's going to go there is, it's basically, it's going to be, it's a cleaning services business is what it is. So there's going to be trucks there, it'll be cleaning services.
Is this going to be subject to environmental stipulation? I don't know what chemicals he's using, although we all have wells in that neighborhood.
Well, I'm open, it's just a, it's just a storage. I'll let you answer, please.
So actually, what's going to happen is what has already been happening since September. So if the building is used as a storage facility, where is the products that are just...
Excuse me, excuse me, I'm sorry to bother you. Al?
Al.
Al?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's kind of disturbing, because we're here in your conversation, plus that's our, thank you.
So the cleaning products are similar to cleaning products that you use in your house, only they're used for...
Any, any specific names?
I don't know exactly what products he uses, but they clean in...
It sounds very vague.
They clean office buildings. They clean inside office buildings.
Once again, they, I, I don't know.
There are...
It affects my health, and my neighbor's health, and the neighborhood's health.
But the cleaning supplies are going to be in vans, right? They're not stored outside in the parking lot or anything like that.
People, okay, who use chemicals, okay, in, in a commercial use are subject...
Yeah, anybody who uses...
Do you mind?
If there is anything that is listed with DEC, he would have to have paperwork on that, and it would be subject to the DEC regulations. That's not subject to the town.
Hazmat, hazmat regulation?
We did. If they had hazardous...
If they had.
Well, we don't know, nobody's...
We, um, we got a negative debt on this.
The town does not regulate hazardous materials?
The state does.
The state does and the federal government.
And, and those materials cannot be, cannot be moved in or out, okay, without proper documentation.
Correct.
Correct.
So Barbara, even if we did do the approval here, doesn't this still have to go back to the planning board?
Yes, so this, this variance is for area variances. This will go back to the planning board and the planning board will also hold a public hearing. And these are the type of questions that.
So basically, what we're doing is, we're just looking to do the area variance here tonight. As far as the questions you have really apply to the, the planning board. Those are the questions you can ask them, they're great to answer, they'll have the engineers and everything else there to explain it.
I do understand, uh, I mean, with the additional questions.
Sure.
The, uh, the letter, okay, that I received. Please take further notice, this only Board of Appeals has not made a determination of significance pursuant to the state environmental quality. We have addressed it in one letter, I wanted to make this one address here. I have questions, I'd like to have them answered, that's all I'm asking.
Sure.
Thank you.
So, for purposes of Seeker, a setback variance is not, is a type two action subject to Seeker. So for purposes of this variance, um, it is a type two action under Seeker. The planning board action is subject to Seeker and, uh.
Right.
I don't, with respect to the site plan approval. That's, you know, one of the questions that's asked is whether or not there's any hazardous materials stored on site. And I believe that was no, so.
So Jim, I just want to make sure this gentleman's questions are answered, because he does have some legitimate questions. So is it more of a, you know, a planning board issue and we're just doing the variance for the, the size and everything else? So I just don't want him to think that we're, you know, putting him off and we're not answering his questions, I want him to feel comfortable.
So for purposes of the variance that's being requested, it's not subject to environmental review, it's a type two action under Seeker because it is for a, a setback variance. So, in that case, um, there is no, what we call Seeker State Environmental Quality Review Act. The action, the site plan review for the site plan is subject to, um, a Seeker determination. But to your question, as far as whether or not there's any hazardous materials on site, the answer that was, the Seeker documentation that was provided to the planning board, that was checked as no. And not, as far as I'm aware, um, I do not believe that DEC regulates the materials that a cleaning business has. There's, um, for purposes of OSHA, um, there's some, um, material, uh, data statements and things like that that, you know, have certain handling requirements, but that would be the same for Clorox bleach or anything like that. So those are not considered to be hazardous materials for purposes of environmental review or, um. Would. In, you know, the, the, the hazardous material transportation regulations. Would volumes enter into that, you know, household different from commercial? Right, I mean, the volumes, I mean, for purposes of, um, you know, we can, we can look into that, but one of the requirements in order to get a building permit is under, um, the New York State Fire Code. There's, you know, regulations as far as the hazardous materials, um, you know. I, I don't believe, for bleach, I don't, it's not, you know, it's not.
No, okay, bleach is, isn't considered hazardous from fire point of view, but from environmental or from the drinking water point of view, which is the concern, which is a real concern. So, but here in zoning board, we are talking about the distance, not what to store, what not to store. So I believe this one has to take to the planning board when they have an open meeting, we should bring that one. Definitely is a concern, but zoning board, I don't think we have a restriction on that part.
No, we don't, we.
All we are trying to do is physical size can fit that one or not. So, your, your, I think concern is definitely valid, if I'm living next door, I would.
I'm going to ask one more question.
Sure, absolutely.
Go ahead.
The, the property located at, at 21 McFarland is classified as residential or commercial?
There's a use variance.
We changed about a year ago.
So that, it is zoned as a residential use. The app, the prior owner of the property came before this board and requested a use variance because of the commercial, the zoning board granted a use variance because of the, um, historical commercial uses of the property going back to Sloper Willam.
Sloper Willam Ambulance was there.
Correct.
I don't, I don't know how this, the chronological order of that property disseminates on down from there. Sloper Willam, and then, and then where did the property go after Sloper Willam?
It was owned by a number of different owners.
Private?
Private owners, yes.
The town never owned it?
Town never owned it, no, it's always been a private hand.
The town operated it after John Sloper, okay, passed on?
No, town never operated it.
Sloper Willam Ambulance was there long after, okay, John Sloper passed away?
Yes, but again, that was a, the town had a contract for ambulance services with Sloper Willam Ambulance. So the town never owned the property.
So, so right now, okay, it's, it's granted as a residential, uh, piece of property going to be used for a commercial piece of property in a residential neighborhood?
Right, so it was granted a use variance which allowed a limited, a limited use of the property.
I've been a taxpaying resident, I'm at Farland Road for 35 years. Other neighborhood people, they've been there, okay, probably as long as I have, maybe some not as long. I just don't understand why I pay taxes for a residential, okay, neighborhood that I moved into and it becomes commercial. And people are allowed to do business on my block.
The property's been commercial since prior to zoning. The ambulance business that was there existed prior to zoning. County Players has a warehouse next door.
They do, County Players is back there.
Which is again, you know, non-residential use.
Never noticed there before, this is something new that we are going to be noticing now. Now that I know that these chemicals and things are going to be being used. That's all, I, I, I have further questions, okay, maybe I'll raise some points.
Well, we're hoping that, you know, the chemicals are just going to be, yeah, no problem. We're just hoping that the chemicals are going to be stored there, that's it, they're not going to actually physically use it, just a storage facility is really what it is.
I mean, the only.
And what's.
Yeah, but it can change, right, if, if there's no restriction. I mean, his concern is, I, I can feel it, but.
But my well is voiding.
Right.
Okay, that one.
Or, or anything, we know the next door, right. So, you know, in, being in a neighborhood with a lot of wells around, I can see the concern. I'm not sure how to address, but that's not part of zoning board activity, that's a planning board.
His, I think it's good that you brought these concerns forward, they're on the record and I think they will be addressed at the planning, site plan review. We, we can't do it here. What we did look at when we granted the use permit was his traffic flow. And his guys clean at night, so they pick up their trucks late in the afternoon and they bring them back in the morning. So there's not traffic in and out all day long. That's what he said, and that's, that's the basis that we granted the use variance on. I mean, we didn't want to see truck traffic all day long in and out of there either.
And we knew the residents didn't want to see that as well, so.
Should we put a condition on any of that? Couldn't go in and out at a certain time only or?
No, you can't do that.
Well, that's actually.
Anybody else like to speak for or against it, please come up and state your name, please, and your address?
I'm Meg Braun and I live at 22 McFarland, directly in front of, of.
Property?
Twenty.
Driveway, okay.
Where he, he excavated this, I understand there should be a five foot easement up from the property line. Uh, he took 12 feet from the building, which I believe is part of my property. I don't know that, I can't prove it. But there have been, trucks do go in and out a lot of the time during the day. I wouldn't say more than six a day, maybe. Uh, they do park vehicles in that easement sometimes, they don't use it in the driveway. But they do park things there. My concern was where they were going to put the garage and I understand that's where the, the.
Existence.
Paddy is right now.
No, that will be part of the main, oh, but this is the existing garage, they're just going to replace that floor there. But that's still there.
They're, they're just going to extend.
Now it's still there.
So you want to put the new one here?
Yeah, but it'll be in the back.
Here, the, the water.
Yes, but they would enclose that patio and make this square.
Okay, I was just wasn't sure where they were wanting to put the.
Yes. Um, so it's, it's in a location where it exists in our.
Okay, I just was confused because I am, like, two sides again.
Yes, yes.
Are you here?
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm Braun.
Right, so we are proposing, we were proposing trees here.
Maybe you put some there.
We would love to put them here, but they would be on your property.
And I don't want them on my property, so I'm just, I'm not.
Okay, yep, so it'll stay that way.
Trees along the.
Along the sperm.
No, we put trees here also.
Oh, okay, well, that's good.
So Ms. Braun, I got a question.
Yes.
You said that the gentleman Espinoza is parking or his workers are parking?
Some he has, he doesn't park it there all the time.
In that little slot that was cleared out?
Yes, here, no. In this part.
In that area.
So it's the part they just cleaned out, I think is what you're talking about.
Cleaned out, because it was about, probably about five feet between the building.
Correct, and the wall, whatever you want to call it.
It's a bunch of rocks, really, that's all it is.
Now do you make it wider?
That also actually helped alleviate a drainage problem along his building, because there was, um, earth right up against the building.
Yeah, there was, um, I don't think that was really, I think his problem was more the downspout, but.
Probably.
I, I have a back porch on my house and I can see what goes there on there every day.
So Jim, can we, uh.
I don't know.
We do something about the condition?
I don't, he seems like a very nice man, I'm pretty much fine. I am concerned about it being used for, that it has been used for commercial before and I understand it's zoned that way. But as time goes on, it's, that somebody else is going to request a variance in the same area. I know this has been this way this, for quite a while. And after the ambulance was there, there were people who, some man supposedly who kept an antique car and he did, but he also had a detailing business and there was another car repair place. There were 54 Acuras parked in the back. I, he, somebody rented the land out, I know it was before this owner, but.
Correct.
It's, it really can't be seen from McFarland Road, so they pretty much do whatever they want down back there.
I think, I think our zoning administrator and stuff will go on there and occasionally check on that and they'll, they'll see something like that.
I will say that, um, part of the use variance was the, they had to allow the building department to come and inspect once a year. I think, um, that's not common, but because the use variance is such a unusual, uh, thing in a, in a residential area, we put that in so that the building department could go make sure they're not doing anything they shouldn't be doing.
Yeah, because it is.
Plus, it's commercial, so I believe there's fire inspections once a year too? All right, so.
Well, it's every year, but there's different parts.
Yeah, so once we change the zoning on that to, you know, the use variance to that, exactly as Bob just said, we, we put some pretty stringent contingents in there, conditions so that, you know.
My biggest question was where this garage was going, I really couldn't picture it all. The 15 feet thing just threw me, I did not know they were talking about an existing building.
So, so, yeah, so the way the code is drafted is if you've got an existing building that's already in the setback, if you're going to, in this case, they're talking about put a pitched roof on and eliminate the flat roof. So in that case, it's considered to be an expansion of the non-conformity. So they're not looking to move the front line of the building anymore.
Right.
But to, in order to, in order for the town to grant a permit, they need to do that. The one question I have is, is there any way to put grass or any, any kind of vegetation in that, in that space there?
Not really.
I was going to say it.
No.
It was there, before, before he excavated it there, there was.
It's all shale, you can't, yeah, it's all shale, you can't do any of that property there?
But all this can be done, though.
You can put a planter.
Yes, right.
You can put a plant, okay.
It's pretty much rock.
I, 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 one of the, one of the things and, and, you know, for purposes of a buffer between that property, since it's so close, you know, some sort of buffer, I think would be appropriate.
Well, actually, there sort of is a buffer, because my property is pretty high compared to, you know, where he's. I can see his roof on my porch, so.
It'll look nicer with it.
Yeah, I can see that in your pictures, but, you know, anyway, it does.
I, I have a question, if you're sitting on her porch, what are you going to see with this new roof structure?
Al?
Al?
You're going to see more roof.
But you're going to see a nicer looking roof. Here.
From, from where I sit, where, which picture is this?
You're going to see that.
Okay, this is going to be a pitched roof, that's correct. This will be an improvement. But this is.
Okay, just making a point.
So hopefully a nicer view than what you're seeing today.
Glad to give you some. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else in the audience like to speak, please, ma'am, come on up, state your name and your address, please?
Hi, Cheryl Lipton, I'm at 21 McFarland, I'm directly across the street.
Okay.
And as Doug has his concern about the water, I do as well, my, you kind of addressed that. So I'll come to the next meeting on that one. My question is the tractor trailers, now that it's bigger, I had to actually help a tractor trailer back in his property. That shouldn't, a tractor trailer should not be on McFarland for that purpose.
When was that?
Um, well, when my house was getting rebuilt, maybe it was two months ago, no, we weren't even in yet, so it was April. We weren't even in the house yet. So I had to tell the driver to go down to, um, Beechwood, turn around and come back up so we could back in that way. It should never happen, never, ever, ever. I mean, I have such a tough time with our road as it is with the traffic. Now that we have Adams, they don't want to stop at that light, they go through. And, um, unfortunately, my, my neighbor's dog got killed in front of my driveway, um, a month ago and the car just took off and just didn't wait. So this is the tragedies of McFarland Road and it just gets worse. And I've been there for 26 years. So, I mean, with all this stuff, I mean, it's just hard to live there. And, you know, my property goes downhill, so whatever he admits from his property is going to go right into my well and I'm going to consume it. So that's all I have to say.
Would that be a planning board issue too, Jim?
You know, very legitimate concerns and I appreciate you folks bringing it to our attention. I think for the purview of this board, like, those are more planning board issues than zoning board issues. Now, and, and just, um, for the residents, um, there was a, there, the, a water main was put in McFarland.
And you were, of course, about to, we have all shale.
No, and so at some point in time, um, the water district will be expanded. So just so the, the residents know that was, uh, put in, um.
Yeah, we, we know it's there.
Right.
Yeah, we, we lived there when it's what it is.
Right, so I'm just. So, um, but, you know, as far as the issue with respect to water, um, if you do have issues with the well in, in the, in the near term, the town is looking to expand the water district to serve the properties. When the main was put in, there were, um, connections put in for all of the, the properties. But right now, the wellfields don't have suffi- sufficient capacity to supply all of the properties. So the town's in the process of expanding the wellfields to permit, um, the residents to connect it at, at a future date. So, um, so there's that.
Well, we do have that option to do that now.
So.
I don't think that would, it's necessary for us to do it since we have plenty of.
No, right.
Plenty of water that we have.
Right, so, but.
And it's probably a very expensive proposition too, all but.
It has to be, yes.
You don't know prices are going up.
So I guess my only other concern is, you know, this lady, uh, talked about the tractor trailer. I'm, I'm concerned that, because we were told there's only going to be six bins there, so, uh, if, if that's truly the case, that is a concern, we shouldn't have something.
Well, maybe, I've seen it, I've seen it as well, properly, a couple of different times throughout, I couldn't put my back on.
Now, what, what type of?
I don't really know what was on that property.
What type of, I mean, these are deliveries type of?
Yes, I believe.
Okay.
I think it was a delivery pile truck, I don't know if I'm correct, but I'm not 100%.
So Margaret, are you familiar with that at all?
Too, um, if, to, instead, I guess he backed off of McFarland, is that what?
Well, the way he was trying to.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, ma'am.
The way he was trying to do it is he passed the property and was going to back in that way and where my house is, there's no way to go forward. So he, it was easier for him to go past my house and back in that way. I used to work for you, Night Family, so I have an idea on how they operate.
I think that could.
Give you the problem.
Well.
I mean, we used to, what we used to do, if we couldn't get in a property or we were not allowed to go down, we would take the items off of that and put it on a straight truck and the straight truck would go and deliver it. You know, I mean, there's ways around it.
I think it's a planning issue with tractor trailers and I think it could be resolved that way. Yeah, I certainly, and I had mentioned before, absolutely legitimate concerns, you know, especially with that type of business. But again, you know, that's really a planning board issue, not a zoning board issue.
I agree, but we just want to make sure that, you know, their concerns are heard at the planning board. So if they're not able to attend the meeting, that somebody will be a spokesperson for them to say, these are some of the issues that, you know, some of the residents brought up. Somebody needs to do it if they can't attend.
We will, and we'll make sure that these minutes are sent to the planning board members on this topic.
I think it behooves the applicants or the applicant's engineer to be proactive and not have the questions asked, to have the information prior to and make that as part of the submission, whether it be about, uh, the chemicals. So we've done buildings before.
The cleaning products.
They've been, you know, toxic or whatever, so we've been asked to provide a list and how it's going to be stored and protected, so I don't think that's unreasonable.
No.
And I don't want to say that, you know, for Carlos's sake, the limitations of the, I imagine they were delivery vehicles, they weren't his vehicles. They weren't his vehicles, but to be limited. And that's it. This is what you're limited to, period. That can make that physical turn. You don't want to make the entranceway any larger. It's a residential street. Could accommodate it by making a wider entrance, bigger radiuses to allow the bigger vehicles. But I wouldn't want that because again, you want to maintain the residential streetscape, so to speak. So he has to, so he has to...
So will you be at the planning board, Al, you or Margaret?
I, well, I'm going to be at the planning board as a byproduct of the architect, drawing up the pretty pictures and making the building look like a residence. I will be there.
So my suggestion to you, since you're here tonight and you've heard a lot of the questions, you may want to make sure your person is prepared to answer some of their concerns.
We, we will.
I'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
To the toxicity and the volatility.
Mr., sorry, can you please come up?
Sir, we have to use the microphone. I'm sorry.
Sorry, you have to, can't hear you.
We just want to make it up and down.
No, no, no problem. To the toxicity and the volatility of the products being stored.
A list, a list would be appropriate, you know, a list of the materials.
Yes.
Correct.
And the class.
Sure.
Yep.
Our product is...
And how they're contained.
The product is as well.
Once again, I, I, I'm not the professional, okay, on these products, so if we could have them addressed.
Sure.
And the planning board may have already, that may be on their itinerary of questions to ask anyway.
Correct.
What you guys are here for, but all of those items, traffic, yada, yada, yada. It's on there.
That's right.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If we do decide to grant this variance tonight or not, I would like to put a condition in on that side property for Mrs. ... Would that be either like Jim said or Al said or somebody said, that it be somehow grassed over or...
You won't be able to grass over that property. It's too much rock and shale there, but I understand.
Well, the suggestion was a planter.
Yeah, a raised planter.
Some sort of, you know, some sort of...
Yes, Tom, to answer your question, you can put that in as a condition.
Or make the sole purpose of that area to be a walkway as opposed to a driveway. And however you accomplish that, pavers, grass pavers, whatever, that a walkway would be appropriate, right?
Close it off.
You can put a fence on it. You're into the two, ballards, fence or whatever to prohibit that.
That pass through, right?
Yeah.
Why it was dug out?
Might be easier to put up a fence.
Why it was dug out, it's not me.
Yeah, put, put ballards. That way you can have pedestrian traffic. You wouldn't have any truck traffic.
He told me that he dug it out because the water was seeking leaks down.
Pudding.
Water, when it rained, was coming through the floor.
Pudding, yes.
Because there was dirt, there was dirt, rocks.
So he did that for drainage purposes?
He did it for drainage purposes. It did not help. It was not the problem. He had to address the drainage problem some way, other way, but in the meantime, that's why he told me he dug it out.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you. Okay, anybody else like to speak for or against the audience? If not, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Can I now have a motion to either grant or deny the variance?
Can we do it all in one?
Yeah.
I make a motion to grant the variance. The benefit cannot be, both variances, the setback and the four-car building. Benefit cannot be achieved by any other means. I think as, I think the, the, the architectural renderings of the, the changes to the buildings will be a benefit to the neighborhood. The request is substantial. It, it, it does not appear that this variance will have physical or environmental effects on the, on the neighborhood. And the difficulty is not self-created, I don't think. Self-created would be something that's already existing that we have to approve. This isn't there yet. So I, I move that we grant the two variances. Two, three? How many are there?
Two.
Two variances.
Two.
So I'm going to say that I think some of that was self-created. Without a doubt, there are potential environmental impacts, water drainage, et cetera. But I think that there's a remedy in place to, you know, at least aesthetically wise, make it look a little nicer, the side road there, et cetera. So I just want to add those couple of comments into there, into the record. So now we need a second.
I'll second it.
Can we get a roll call, B? Any other conditions before we do?
Yes, I like, I like the conditions, concerns with the chemical storage or chemical use. So the planning board should look, look into that in more detail about how they are going to contain the chemicals so it doesn't get spilled over, not only storage, but also they should have containment plan.
I got to ask. That's a good question.
Is that a condition of the variance?
Well, it's, it's going to be, the variance is conditioned upon...
Zoning board.
Site plan approval by the planning board.
Right. Okay, so that's...
But your condition...
My condition's different, yeah.
Yes.
What was your condition, Tom?
I just think in that, Mrs. Braun, is it, Ms. Braun, what she had stated about vehicles in that slot between the building and the berm where her property abuts, I make a suggestion that that become a no-accessible parking area. However...
I agree.
So no vehicle access?
No vehicle access, yeah. However, the architect and the planner...
I will amend my approval for both of these conditions.
Okay, so we could put those in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we make a vote, right?
All right, so we have a, got a first, as you redid yours, and you got Pete as a...
I'll second the motion.
You're at a second, the amended.
I will second as amended.
Okay. Now, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Deloport?
Yes.
Mr. Deloport?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, audience.
Thank you to members of the audience for their comments. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Can we now have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second. All in favor?
All right.
Who's second?
I do.